Well, the council meetings to order. First up is a roll call vote, a roll call, sorry. Councilmember Frazek, Councilmember Dominguez, Mayor Prochimac Farren, Councilmember Martinez are present. I think that Councilmember Schultz will be here a little later. Item number two, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second? Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it and we move to item number three, approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Okay.
Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We've moved to item number four. A public hearing, open a public hearing on amending the code of ordinances for the city of West Liberty by amending provisions pertaining to water rates. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Second. Is there discussion? The clerk will call the roll.
Frazek?
Yes.
McFarren?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
All right, we are now in the public hearing on the amending the provision for the water rate. Are there public comments? Are there public comments? Are there public comments? Is there any correspondence? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on amending the code of ordinances by amending the provisions pertaining to water rates.
Motion to close public hearings?
Is there a second? Second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Martinez?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
McFarren?
Yes.
Frazek?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
We're now to item four A, ordinance twenty twenty five zero seven one five hyphen one two. An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of West Liberty, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to water rates. This is the first reading. Is there a motion to approve the the, to approve the first reading?
Mr. Mayor, make motion to amend water rates.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
McFarren?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Frazek?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
We're down to item number five. It is opening the public hearing by amending the code of ordinance of the city of West Liberty, Iowa by amending provision pertaining to sewer rates. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open public hearing, I'll second.
And it's been moved and seconded, is there discussion? Hearing then, the clerk will call the roll.
Dominguez?
Yes.
McFarren?
Yes.
Frazek?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
We're now in the public hearing relating to sewer rates. Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? Is there any correspondence? I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing pertaining to the sewer rates.
Motion to close?
Is there a second? Is there discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Martinez?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Frazek?
Yes.
McFarren?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
We're down to five A, ordinance twenty twenty five zero seven one five hyphen one three. An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of West Liberty by amending provisions pertaining to sewer rates, first reading. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
McFarren?
Yes.
Frazek?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Next up are reports, and the first report is from the city engineer, Lenny Larson. Do we have him on?
Uh, no, we just have, I don't think we had him on tonight. We just had him provide a written report, we're just getting started.
Okay, all right. Next up is the report from the city manager. Think they add to.
Mr. Mayor, I have just a we had a, we lead, the we lead director and I had a meeting today. And in addition to the work that we're doing, we identified going over a goal setting session between the two boards coming up. We identified updating the financial agreement by utilizing the taxing from finance. Um, we, I provided an outline of a development incentive package for the director to go through and review and possibly interview a couple of our local developers to see if they have some input on that. And then we reviewed the matching grants. And we're gonna look at, or part of the school session that we're gonna talk about is extending matching grant opportunity to the residential members of our community. And in addition to that, we toured the community as well, looking at marketing opportunities. And we also identified the we lead director and for myself some work on some you know, some things that needed to be cleaned up and I gave attention to. I did reach out to our staff today and they worked really quickly on again, given our nice wet weather that we're having, it's really helped weeds and the and the grass grows. So again, I wanna thank them for all of their hard work. But we just needed, had some areas that needed some additional reading. So, and the fire and the EMS transition, we're continuing to work through. The clerk and I have been providing some email communications with them regarding that transition. I know I've included Councilmember Frazek and the mayor on those, just to keep you apprised of what's the administration's doing. I just wanted to, for a public purpose, there was there's some information thinking that the city may have shut off the credit card to the ambulance and we did not. There was a, well, I don't wanna get into too much detail, but the wrong, there was a wrong card within the vehicle and then the staff communicated that they found the appropriate card. So they were able to fuel, but I just wanted to make sure that Mary council understood that the city staff did not turn that off. And finally, voluntary action. They have started filling up their space here at the city administrative building. And they've had another large donation this evening that they brought in. So they're looking forward to opening the doors and getting that moving. And Mayor, I just put in front of you, just a reminder, if you wanted to share that real quickly.
Yeah, yeah, the, Lee and I have been meeting with the University of Idaho Mobile Clinic. And they'll be using space here on Saturday, July twenty sixth, from ten AM to about three PM. And they'll be doing back to school for sports physicals. So we've gone over the space and we've got a couple of flyers, both in English and Spanish that we can post and encourage participation. They had been working out of First Church United. We have a little more space here and more ability for when folks need to be have things discussed privately, we've got more ability here. So Lee found a table for examination online for a hundred dollars. We are able to accommodate more of what they need in the way of equipment here. This is something I think that the more we get the community acclimated to this being available, I think the more utilization is going to occur.
And one last thing, I'd like to ask Chief Hauser to introduce our new recruit, Jean Payer.
This is Officer Jorge Perez, will be joining us. He's from, that's what he is for a period of his life and stuff. It's in middle school years here, graduated from Muscatine High School. He was born in Puerto Rico, he's bilingual, we're really excited to have him. He's previously worked at Marango as a reserve officer and then he's worked full time at Oakdale, the prison in McFarville. He's really excited to be here, we're excited to have him. We have the slot for the September Academy. Good things right now.
Well, there's two things. The sign says you belong here. And we also say since you've lived here before, welcome home.
Thank you, Chief. And that is all I have unless you have any questions.
Other questions for the city managers?
Yeah, how's the highway annexation coming along?
Um, so we are currently working, the we lead director has been very persistent with Mr. Christensen. The US Body Works, we do have a development agreement. Mr. Christensen has that in hand and has communicated he's taking that to his attorney. I received an email today from Century Link, which is another property that sits directly in front of All American. And so they're currently, they're, they're working with us to get their stuff filled out. So if Mr. Christensen could, you know, move forward with his part, then we should be able to get a hundred percent annexation, we being in the first part of August. But that's, that's where we're at right now. And I, again, feel the we lead director's been working almost daily trying to follow through with that process.
As far as committee reports, we heard from Cody Franklin regarding what's happening with, or things we're looking at, electrical and the utility. Committee did meet to discuss those concerns. In addition, we transferred the fire department over to the new West Liberty and rural townships fire protection agency. And that occurred on July first. And Councilmember Frazek and the other two members of the board, the eight member board, four of which represent the city of West Liberty. We had our first annual meeting then on July second and pretty much went through things that we needed to go through in terms of complying with the articles of incorporation and making sure that we have the legal things in place. We also elected the fire chief that evening. And I think that's about all I can remember.
But they're small in detail, so.
Did the bylaws get? Yes, the bylaws took a considerable amount of time working through those. And then when they were viewed by the attorney, there were only a couple of things that needed to be changed on those. Those have been filed with the Secretary of State's office. They've been filed very early on. Sherry filed them with the Muscatine, with Muscatine County. They also have been filed with Johnson County and with Cedar County as well. So all of those actions have been taken. It's continuing as Lee pointed out, her report of making sure that all the things are transferred over and we clear up communication like the issue that, that there was some feeling that we had cut off the credit cards to the ambulance service. The three ambulance vehicles are still registered with the city as they're still our responsibility, as the employees are our responsibility. I'm not aware of any other committee meetings or don't recall that anything else has been done, so. All right. Then we go to item number seven, vendor voucher claims, vendor voucher claim list number one in the amount of nine hundred sixty four thousand one hundred twenty three dollars and thirty three cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We now move to item number eight, public comments and or correspondence. This is the time that is set aside for the public for topics of city businesses other than those listed in the agenda. No action may be taken tonight. So first off, and we'd like for folks to state their name, address for the record and keep comments to no more than two minutes. Are there any public comments?
My name is Arbuda Cavasos, resident of eight sixteen North Columbus Street. I'm formally here to face the city of Wesleyan public record for failure of process, failure of governance and failure of duty to the public. On June ten, I submitted variance application. On June twenty third, I paid a hundred dollar fee. Since then, no hearing has been scheduled. No formal response has been provided and I was forced to comply under enforcement without ever receiving my right to be heard. I was later told the Board of Adjustment couldn't establish warrant. That's not my failure, that's this city's failure. The variance process isn't optional. If the board can't meet, residents have no legal remedy. That's a structural failure of governance. Every official here has been notified by email. No one can claim ignorance, silence was a choice. When I requested public records, the city failed to include the letter that triggered this enforcement. Whether negligent or deliberate, it proves the process is broken. After weeks of stalling, the city has offered me a refund to avoid accountability. I didn't pay for a refund. I paid for a legal process you failed to provide. This isn't delay, just a delay. It's potential misuse of public funds. And now, along with the selective enforcement and procedural failure, this will be part of my foremost complaint to the Iowa Bunsman and state auditor. My full written statement will be submitted as a PDF via format for the record. And that is all.
Thank you for your comments. Again, we can't comment on what you presented to us tonight. Are there other public comments? Are there other public comments? Hearing then, we'll move to city council and start with Councilmember Martinez and the comments or correspondence.
My only comment is that it's fair week, so everybody make sure to get out and clear everybody out in the fair. Hope everybody's got their ducks in a row and it's a big event and there's gonna be a lot of public being around, we're gonna get a lot of traffic in town, so I just hope everybody stays safe and we all get to see each other at the fair and enjoy time with your families.
Thanks. Mayor Prochimac Farren?
I don't think.
Okay, Councilmember Martinez?
Dominguez?
Uh, I went to the local progress national convening. It was almost five hundred local elected officials from across the nation in one spot. It was wonderful. Brad Landers, who just ran for New York City mayor, mayor who cross and made history with cross endorsing Zoran. Mom, Mom Donnie, I can't remember how to say blood things. He was our, you know, speaker and it was very, very inspiring. There was a lot of workshops on how municipalities can prepare themselves for supporting our citizen or our residents here that may be undocumented, how we can support the families. There's a lot of resources, so if you're interested, you, as elected officials, you can sign up for local progress to become a member. They have tons of resources. We also, let's see. Uh, oh, about like the utility stuff, there was a lot of resources about that too. So I haven't really, I just got back on Sunday, so I haven't been able to like write down everything. But I think there's gonna be a lot more opportunity for me to connect this with more more of those, those opportunities that I've been able to do in the past. One thing that Brad Landers said was, you know, about the climate right now. It is a strategy to make, especially like freshman counselors' lives hard. You know, it takes a long time to learn about, you know, what is right, what is wrong and all of the cracks that have kind of gone fit itself into our establishment and how we can be helpful in, in finding them out and also changing things. And so you said you have to ask yourself if you're a fighter or folder and I'm definitely not a folder. I don't know if you know me, so I, I did pick up my council papers and I will be running again, even though I did say I'm not doing this again. I'm not a folder, so that's my update.
Councilmember Frazek?
Sorry, Tim.
So we move on to the city manager.
I received an email today from Chamber Director Jacob Lane and he asked that I share this with mayor and council and city staff. He says, hello, I won't be able to attend tonight's meeting, but I appreciate if you could pass along the following message to the council and our city workers. Both the fair parade and the picnic in the park were wonderful successes and I want to sincerely thank the city of West Liberty for the vital role it played in making them happen. Chief Hauser and the entire police department did a fantastic job with the parade routing and leading while also maintaining a friendly and reassuring presence throughout picnic in the park. I'm incredibly grateful for their support and their professionalism. A big thank you as well to Mac and the parks and recreation department. Their help with the setup, take down and running the free swim at the Kimberley Park was outstanding. Overall, the city support was exceptional and I'm truly thankful for the effort and the teamwork shown by every department involved. I truly believe Sunday was one of the most successful parades and picnics we've had in years. And a large part of that was, and a large part of that was the city. This council should be very, this council should be proud of its city workers, I know. So that's Jacob. In addition to that, and again, you know, just visiting with staff, everything went very well for the fun run, for the event, and I think it's a great start to the week coming up as Councilmember Martinez, you know, spoke about. And again, within my report, we took a proactive approach to meet with the Muscatine County Fair director and, and went through things from the city side of it. So we're, we're confident, the electric superintendents assured them and that we'll make sure we have power for the concerts, so. Okay, so with that said too, the other public comment I had was on my correspondence with Mr. Cavasos regarding his variance request. And that is all I have.
All right, thank you. City clerk?
Don't have anything outside of what we have.
Okay, all right, thanks. Item number nine, a discussion and appropriate action by the city council of West Liberty on event assistance and street closure application for the Yulin Spiegel. Say it again for me.
Well, nobody is, right?
For Children's Festival on September thirteenth, two thousand twenty five. So first up is discussion, then a motion and consent vote. So is there discussion?
It's usually a really good event.
And it's gonna be about the same as it was last year, the same street closure system. Everybody's welcome to come, part of the fence. So, and I believe Francisco took care of our insurance, so you guys should have.
And we'll continue to work with our electric department. They've been really busy with projects, but we do have it keyed on our, for the electric. Make sure we've got that. And we'll coordinate on the rest strings.
It has made a big difference. Things are very pleasant that way.
And the morning after, you folks were out cleaning up and straightening up.
That starts at like ten o'clock and we are there probably until midnight cleaning up the street and then we come back in the morning when we have daylight.
Yeah.
The rest of the, so yeah, we could get some assistance.
Yeah, it does not, it goes, we are noticing the fact that you work hard putting this on and also the great work after it's completed too. Is there a motion? Okay, is there a second? Second. All, is there further, just, we had discussion. All those favors signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you, and we'll move on to nine, the discussion appropriate action of the council on early closure for the chamber golf outing on August twenty eighth for staff participation. Discussion first?
I provided a memo to council, so no questions pertaining to that. In addition to that, I, I wanna make sure that mayor and council also have the opportunity, if they're interested in participating, to speak now with.
Telling the mayor this for golfing? I haven't golfed in over twenty years.
Well, and we didn't say that we were all golfers, we just said we would participate.
All right, is there further discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We move to nine C, discussion and appropriate action on the relocation of city administrative staff and operations to one 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 West Seventh Street, the city administration building that's here. And so we have discussion, motion and a roll call vote. So is there discussion?
Mary council again had provided an outline of information. We're at that point with operations where we certainly don't wanna go forward if council has a preference as to how they wanna see the organization operations go forward. So I'll leave it at that.
Yeah. I've gone and looked at the space too. I commend Sherry and Lee have gotten input from folks that will be working in this area of what they see that they like, what they propose for changes. And we also feel that there needs to be some time in the building for people to get a sense of when you're actually working here, the planning for that and then the actual, when you move in are two different things. So that kind of openness in this decision making, I think has been very good. Is there further discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll go ahead, motion.
Is there a second? Second.
Just question, because within the memo, you have three different options. Are we looking for option one?
Yep.
With option, I will go ahead and make sure I clarify that my motion is detailing the option one.
And are you okay with that as a second? Councilmember, okay. All right, it's a roll call vote, clerk will call the roll.
McFarren?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Frazek?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, we are now at nine D, resolution twenty twenty five zero seven one five, item two six seven. A resolution approving and adopting the city of West Liberty's information security use policy. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Is there discussion?
I have a question, just because I didn't have the packet and I'm looking at this right now. Is there, this came up at the conference, is there anything in here about allowing like other folks to tap into our data?
Like a third party.
Yeah. Um so for us, this is an internal policy.
Okay.
So that um that is an external policy. And so um we, that's what um our current IT director. Um we had an audit completed by Marcos Technology, and these are some of those steps within that audit. And so right now, these are the internal policies with staff. And then we'll continue working on external policies um going forward. But that was one strategy where they're starting to tap into like municipality surveys. Cameras and stuff to target folks.
For the, I'm just to answer that question quickly, um currently, right now, we have external firewalls and we have, again, under our audit with Marco, they were satisfied with our security that we have in place. Um but in addition to that, we'll be working through um those processes for checks and balances. And part of that is a continued audit of the the system.
Okay, thank you.
Are there further questions or discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Prezek.
Yes.
McFerrin.
Yes.
Dominguez.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Next up is nine E, Resolution twenty-two-five-zero-seven-one-five, item two-six-eight. A resolution approving and adopting um the city of West Liberty acceptable use policy as um admin and as administrative. I'm struggling here.
It's the administrative.
As the administrative policy. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
So in addition to the um the uh policy, this is that piece that is that layer of protection um for how we're using that equipment and for the use of that equipment, what we could be subject to jeopardize. Um so it holds, again, individuals accountable for that equipment and the use of the equipment.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Martinez.
Yes.
Prezek.
Yes.
McFerrin.
Yes.
Dominguez.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Next up is nine F, Resolution twenty-two-five-one-seven-one-five, item two-six-nine. A resolution to approve pay estimate number two for Triple B Construction Incorporated for the Evans Avenue San- sanitary gravity sewer sewer extension project in the city of West Liberty. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Dominguez.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Prezek.
Yes.
McFerrin.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Nine G, Resolution twenty-two-five-zero-seven-one-five, item two-seven-two. A resolution to approve pay payment for fiscal year twenty uh twenty-twenty-five-twenty-six to the West Liberty and Rural Townships Fire and Rescue Agency for the entire budgeted amount of ninety um five thousand five hundred dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We moved and seconded, is there discussion?
Is that just the R half of the P for the year?
Yes, and what uh the proposal uh as Councilmember Prezek um and I know was to do quarterly payments, we just felt we owe the money, we've budgeted for it. Why not give the money to the new agency uh and then we don't have to think about needing that every quarter. Um so that's why this is on uh before us. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
McFerrin.
Yes.
Prezek.
Yes.
Dominguez.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Next up is Resolution twenty-two-five-zero-seven-one-five, item two-seven-one. A resolution to adopt the written employee policy and for the city of West Liberty. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Is there discussion?
So Mr. Mayor, in the memo, um I provided those um items have been updated in the uh book that you have, that is the funnel. And so um I believe uh Attorney Reeser and I uh worked through seven drafts. This is the seventh draft and we, I I'm confident that we've given you an extensive employee handbook and that will go on to our employees to uh provide the management and um allow them the uh opportunities uh for having things a little more spelled out as far as, you know, practices with grievances, um understanding um their benefit packages. Um in addition to that, we um brought in um a extra like remote work from home policies, um flexibilities to schedules. And so um run it up to the most current, you know, I feel, I felt like every day I was getting new things coming through HR stuff. And so this is where we're at, but we certainly can work through it and continue to review it on an annual basis or sooner if need be, so.
So um it's my question to get a clarification, if we were wanting to change something in the handbook, say a year from now, we have to do a resolution?
We do it by resolution with an amendment to the section.
Good, yes.
Good question.
And what I was gonna say is, oh my gosh, it's so much better.
Yeah.
It's so much better, so I appreciate you um doing all the work. There are some things in there where I highlighted and it's like, I think we could add some definitions because there is like legal speaker, not even legal, but just like some some things that maybe a person coming in might not understand, but I I think that's all things that we can do later. Um this is a a huge improvement.
And and then in addition to that, then we will um, once approved, then uh Attorney Reeser and I will start um setting the dates for training and that is going to include mayor and council to go through every um part of the employee handbook. And that might be a good time to even ask those questions with um them as we're going through the training. On top of that, um that time, they're gonna have um a specialty training with all of our supervisors. Um so we can go into more uh details of documentation, disciplinary actions, and also positive reinforcement. Yeah, it's a great idea.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Martinez.
Yes.
Dominguez.
Yes.
Prezek.
Yes.
McFerrin.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
We are to nine I, Resolution uh twenty-two-five-zero-seven-one-five, item two-seven-two. A resolution to consider entering into an agreement with a vendor to assist with interconnect uh billing and back billing due. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Like I write, this is um two fifty an hour of up to ten thousand. All right.
And everything after, this, I'm sorry, everything after will be approved.
Okay, no, that's perfect. And I I feel like that's a low number, so I I'd say that.
And they do anticipate that it will be the ten thousand. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Prezek.
Yes.
McFerrin.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Dominguez.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Item nine J, set the date for a public hearing for FY twenty-five-twenty-six Budget Amendment Number One. Uh are we picking the first council meeting in August?
Yep.
Is that a consent?
Obviously, obviously, yep.
Okay, we will plan on doing that on August fifth. Item nine K, preview of of the uh Octo- or August fifth council meeting. I think the big agenda item will be the second reading um of the water and sewer ordinances. Um so um other than that, I think pretty much routine was sitting.
Yeah, I I think I put in our, in the report, um uh staff and I've been working with um an individual to contract uh and we had a program, uh recreation program. So versus going and hiring a full-time recreation director, um we've opted to look at a contractual where the curriculum, the programming is written, and then it gives us instruction to hand over to staff to um to have the program go on. And then part of that cost would be collected in repaying from fees.
Right.
Um in addition to that, um this is an individual that I got to know through uh CPM. Uh she's former employee of the Department of Education. She's now um the educational uh with IFRS. So um so sh- so we'll have that program ready for you to to review. Um so that's what we have coming up on August fifth and boo hoo, there goes our summer.
Yeah. Item number ten, adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it and we are.